I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Jared, roll call first.
Mr. Adams?
Here.
Julie Tumarki-Fugro?
Present.
Mr. Harley?
Here.
Dr. McComby? Dr. Rig?
Here.
Dr. Schaefer? Mr. Steve? Mr. Schroth? Mrs. Thomas?
Here.
I think we have a forum.
We do.
Okay, so we declare, we have a few people absent tonight, one of whom is President Walter Schroth, so I'm pinch hitting. I've been told that the Pittsburgh Steelers are on just about an hour, so that we're to get through this meeting as quickly as we can, so.
That's why you're here, we know you can do it.
Well, I've got a good record. So that is my welcome, it's always a pleasure to be here. So do we have a, that's my vice president message, do we have any public comments?
No ma'am.
Having heard none, do we have anybody from SGA? Eve, does SGA, I think we do.
So SGA was really busy in the months of September or October, mostly with homecoming. So we are in charge of preparing the pep rally for the school day, which was Friday, October 4th. And then we also took care of homecoming court, and then we had the dance on the 5th, that Saturday. We had a total of 601 students attending the dance. Yeah, so it was a lot, it was in the gym gym, so it didn't get too cramped. And then SGA will be conducting highway cleanup along East Pike this Saturday morning. In addition to SGA events, I will highlight some events that have occurred at the high school in general since the beginning of the year. The club program has recently started in September. The program consists of 30 different clubs, and they're held every Thursday at the school. The international teachers from IEP, known as the Fulbright Program, visited the high school every Wednesday since the middle of September. Then on their final day, which was October 16th, they coordinated the cultural fair in the new gym. It was really cool, they all had their own setup, and all the students got to go around and look at their countries and kind of talk to them, so that was nice. And then the senior picnic was held on October 16th, which consisted of a picnic slash dinner, and then a kickball tournament for the seniors. And then the first student of the month was named, it was Lizzie Kinnear, she was for the month of October. And then lastly, the high school will be hosting IAASD School Safety Parent Night tomorrow from 6:00 to 8:00. Various clubs will be there presenting at the event, explaining how being in the club helps them feel connected to the school environment. So, that's for parents to go to and talk to the teachers. And that's all I have.
Where did you have the school picnic?
We had it at the high school, so like, seniors just showed up in the upper commons, we ate. Like, different people donated food, and then we had the kickball tournament on the field, on the football field. It was fun, but it was cool. So, yeah. East Pike won.
Did that, well, how about that? That's great.
Of course.
So, thank you very much, do we have anybody from IAEA? AFSCME? Or STUCO? STUCO? Superintendent's report, please.
Yes ma'am, thank you. I do want to echo what you said about the cultural fair with the Fulbrights, and I just can't say enough about how great that program is. I, you know, I usually teach social studies and I learn more in that hour than, you know, than I had in a long time, so. It was a really nice event, and yeah, I want to thank them one last time for sharing their experience with us, and hopefully they are having a good time in Pittsburgh. Tomorrow night is our school parent, our parent night for school safety. We have guests coming to talk about school safety from all different angles tomorrow night, the high school, 6:00 PM. If your parents can, community members can, please attend. The evening starts with a presentation by Aservo, which is, they talk about human trafficking and the dangers thereof. And then there are breakout sessions in the evening that involve everything from suicide prevention, cellphone safety. DA Manz, he's going to be there to present on how to keep kids safe online on their cellphones. We have, the Fatula Group is going to be there to talk about what parents should do if there was a terrible event at one of our schools. Because, you know, that's a blind spot, and what we say, we drill all the time, but we don't really know about parents, and I don't want to spoil it for you, but the short answer is, don't come. Do not come to the schools, you will not get your child, and all you will do is add chaos to a situation that's already chaotic, you know, so. The Fatula Group is going to talk about things you can do to be productive and be part of the solution in those situations. We're going to talk about Safe2Save, and how to properly use Safe2Save for parents as well, because a lot of parents don't know they can make Safe2Save reports. We've had situations recently that Safe2Save really, really helped us out, so. There's a lot of different events, so we're going to have a lot of community partners are going to have tables with information to, you know, help students that are grieving, or students that are suffering from abuse, or students that are in any kind of danger in any way, shape, or form, so. We hope that everybody can come out tomorrow night, 6:00 PM at the senior high school for that. And then finally, I just want to give kudos to the Indiana Area Education Foundation for their tremendously successful event. Last Thursday night, the family spaghetti dinner, at the family, or the Home Farm Bar. Special thanks to the Stutzmans who donated that venue. I want to thank Brandy Pavlik and Bailey Adams, Lisa Palmer and Laura Cravens for leading that project, and really doing a fantastic job. I want to thank the dance team from the high school, the boys' basketball team, and the boys' baseball team for showing up and helping us with parking cars and cleanup for the event. And Mrs. Datsin's class for putting together the smores packets for the kids to go outside and make smores over the fire. It was a tremendous event.
Mrs. Stubeys.
Or Stubeys, I'm sorry, what was I saying?
Datsin.
I said Datsin, I called it, Mrs. Stubeys class made those. But for the, you know, for, it was just a community event, so many people poured out for this, and it was a very successful event too. We had a special donor who tripled everything that we made that night, making it a financial success as well, so. They want to remain anonymous, so we'll keep them that way for now. But it really, really was a nice event, and the foundation's really starting to get some traction. And I'm eternally grateful for the board members who have just, you know, stepped up from the community and from our board to make sure that that initiative is successful, so we're excited about where it's headed.
Yeah, both events, the golf outing and the spaghetti dinner.
Very successful, so, I support great community, pretty part of.
And all the students who participated. Lot of fun, lot of fun, thank you, is that it?
Yes ma'am, it's all right. Oh, no, I don't, I'm sorry. First marketing period ends this Thursday. Parent Teacher Night is November 4th. So, you know, a quarter of the year is gone already, going fast. He's going to be in college soon.
Thank goodness.
Don't rush it.
That's it.
We have no solicitor's report tonight, unless there's something we wanted to comment on. So I would like to look at the minutes in the agenda, do I have a motion to approve? I have a second, two seconds of one vote movement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I forgot to ask for any discussion.
Of what?
The minutes. No discussion, all those in favor say aye, those opposed say nay.
Art did it. Keep up, Charlotte.
Now, we have board reports. I'm up for the Indiana County Technology Center, because I attended for.
Do we do the minutes, the agenda?
I asked for both.
Perfect.
Is that okay? I'm so nervous. So I attended for Walter, and, you know, we did all of our regular business, talked about some very important items, but the big news is they got two big grants approved on two large grants, and I'll let Rob say what those are, because I can't remember the titles.
The one grant that I know is for their HVAC project. The other initiative is for their masonry project that they're talking about expanding, so. So they're excited about where that's headed. And special thanks to Mr. Harley for donating some of his time for the work on that. So that was the big news.
It was a great meeting, they're really moving ahead and excited about starting some new programs, so it was a good meeting.
Erin?
Dr. Rig?
Yes, we met on October 15th. Prior to our meeting, we had a conference session to discuss the executive director search. I will be serving as a member of the interview committee for that group. We approved our typical list of payments, deposits, treasuries report, and budget summary. We accepted the resignations of one behavior support para, one part-time secretary, one full-time para, one counselor, and one 21st Century Program staff member. We hired one para, one behavior support para, one lead, and three regular staff for the 21st Century Program. We approved salary adjustment for one occupational therapy assistant, and we approved retirement benefits for Mr. Lamont McCroskey. We accepted the education for children and youth experiencing homelessness grant funds from Pennsylvania Department of Education for $208,671. We accepted several agreements, MOUs and contracts. And we changed the Friend of Education Award that we typically give from our board to Dr. Bridget Mattson Friend of Education Award.
I saw that paper. That's a great policy for our community, but you're on the committee to choose a new director.
Correct.
Okay, we don't have Dr. Schaefer's not here.
I can give you a quick update, the outreach committee talked about the semi-annual publication that we're going to be sharing with all of our stakeholders here. It's going to come out the second week of December, it's going to be a print, you know, trifold event, and then there'll be one again closer to graduation in the spring. And we also analyzed the data from our social media to see if, you know, there were any trends emerging from that, and there aren't really. It seems like human interest stories spiked the most, which is, which we found interesting, you know, but, uh. But we're, you know, the outreach committee gave the administration a directive to keep on keeping on with our approach to social media and keep telling the story, and then keep analyzing the data every time we get together.
Good, thank you, sounds good. Ms. Quintina Thomas, the library, please.
Well, we just had our evening in the Stax fundraiser, so some of us were there, it was a great turnout. We haven't met yet to discuss, you know, how much money we raised. Thanks, Rob, again for the entertainment.
You were singing, Rob.
That was fun. And that's pretty much, it will meet on November 20th.
You had a great party, it was just, I thought it was a great time.
I have Rob on video, if anyone wants to see. I did record him.
Should we post that on the website?
We could.
I did take a video, but I did. I took a small video.
Did you, yeah?
Yeah. And then me and Julie was backup singers.
We went karaoke. Okay, we'll have everybody, we got a little bored and everybody goes singing. Dr. Sally's not here for McComby for the PSBA updates, does anybody have anything they want to contribute to that?
I do want to say I am going to the delegate assembly on Saturday in McInnesburg.
Wow, that's supposed to be good.
So there's a list of priority issues to vote on, which is state financial support, mental health needs, school safety, and a discussion about expanding free breakfast to free lunch. So those are just a list of priority issues we'll vote on.
Is that all day, or is that a period?
I think it's nine to two.
Wonderful, good for you.
All morning, though, definitely.
That's a nice commitment, yeah.
Sure.
Okay, academic and extracurricular committee.
Yes. We did not have a meeting, our meeting is next Monday, but we do have some agenda items. 5.2, a student disciplinary agreement. Based on recommendation of administration, we approved the student disciplinary agreement for student number 2425-2 as submitted.
All the, discussion, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed say nay. Okay, the ayes have it.
Conference requests that the board approves Kayla Galeka to attend the ACIS Barcelona trip for international group leaders from January 16th through the 20th, 2025, in Barcelona, Spain, at an estimated cost of $477 for a substitute teacher.
One second.
Discussion?
Great opportunity for Mrs. Galeka, and it's great that she found the ACIS opportunity to help people.
Yeah, I wish I could go to Barcelona for four days, forty hours.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
And last, 5.4, we have two service agreements. That the board approves the speech therapy school contract with Laughter and Language LLC for a licensed and ASHA-certified speech-language pathologist, beginning October 26, 2024, through September 23, 2024, at a cost of $95 per hour. And the statement of work agreement with Silver Linings to provide BHTA services, starting October 21, 2024, through June 6, 2025, at a cost of $94 an hour for BCBA lead and $44 an hour for a para.
Second.
Okay, some discussion on this, please.
The speech pathologists are necessary to comply with a student that is outside the district, and they're also going to be picking up some of our extra load. We're a little overloaded right now with the speech-language pathologists. So we have to close the gap there, and we're working on that. And the para professionals, again, we're short pairs, everyone's short pairs, we can't seem to keep them. So this agreement with Silver Linings, you've already agreed, you've already agreed to hire two of these paras, we're asking for a third to help make sure that the students' IEPs are upheld and satisfied.
Yeah, this is, for my comment. This is a tough one to take, I think we have to do it, but I think the board's going to have to work hard, because this seems to be a statewide phenomenon that we're not having consistent retention across the state with para educators. So this is something we've got to address the sooner the better, I think.
Yes ma'am, it's a tough job.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed say nay. Thank you, Sue. Okay, we're on to Dr. Schaefer, who's not here, for Policy and Personnel Committee, who's handling that?
I will do it.
Okay, thank you.
So we don't have a committee, I don't have a committee meeting report, so can I take 6.2 to 6.4 together? For us to vote, okay, so 6.2, resignation of para educators. Do I need to read the whole? Okay, 6.2 resignation of para. As presented. 6.3, board policies as presented. 6.4, substitute list as presented.
Discussion?
Second.
I'm just getting there, but I.
Discussion, okay, discussion.
Okay, great.
Real quick, a lot of these policies are just semantics, words changes that comply with the laws, and there's nothing monumental here that we did pass. The one about exercises or demonstrations on our campus for political or other reasons without permission are now prohibited by all community members, so.
Anyone else?
Keep going. All right.
All those in, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay. Okay, now.
Okay, now 6.5, I'll read this one. Long-term substitute assignment, that based on a recommendation of administration, the board employs Emma Nagle as a long-term learning support substitute teacher effective around January 13, 2025, through the last day of the school year, at an earned-in rate of $250.41, be approved pending receipt of all required paperwork.
Second. Who did that? Sue? Discussion. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Okay, 6.6, employment of support personnel. That based on the recommendation of the administration, the board employed Elena Singer as a para educator effective October 29, 2024, at an hourly rate of 1375 per hour, subject to a 60-day probation period and receipt of all required paperwork be approved. That based on a recommendation of the administration, the board employed Chad Fasson Meyer as a custodian effective October 29, 2024, at an hourly rate of 1375 per hour, subject to 60-day probation period and receipt of all required paperwork be approved. That based on a recommendation of the administration, the board employed Joseph Memes as a head custodian effective October 29, 2024, at an hourly rate of 1475 per hour, subject to a 60-day probation period and receipt of all required paperwork be approved.
Second.
Discussion. Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, Tom, you're up, building some grounds.
Dr. Schaefer did a great job cheering the meeting.
He did.
But he's not here, because he's exhausted. So I'll do the best I can, I did watch the whole thing. Took notes. So, there we go. We had a presentation on Eisenhower, from the clerk of the works. We had a discussion with the architect about the canopy and the change order for the canopy changes, amongst other things. The committee recommended, the board considered, Change Order 29, and we referred, and Anthony wanted the Change Order 28 to go back to him to take a look at some other possibilities. They brought the final, they brought the final budget for the furniture, and that, I believe that's on the agenda to approve today as a maximum up to exceed. That furniture has been tested and approved by Erin, and no one can question her judgment on that. We talked about the junior high pool air handler, and it's scheduled. So far, we're not missing any classwork, but they're going to work, repair in there and try to get the pool up and operating in time for use this winter. We also are getting slammed by the lack of copper support on phone lines, and so Chair is recommending that we switch providers and we go to phones over computer. That should save the district several hundred thousand dollars over the next 25 years. But we also are in a situation where we're not going to be supported any longer, no one will be able to make a phone call. I did not do anything with this senior high roof ladder, so I need to climb around a little bit with our maintenance people. We cannot get anything on the classrooms and the childcare area. The, the ESCO folks are going to study the air conditioning and bring us back some information on the various buildings and those costs, and what they see as part of their outreach. We talked about architecture record a bit. The bus garage fire detection system, the bus garage right now doesn't have any fire detection in it. And what happened, that's what happened to Eisenhower, the fire molded all night before it destroyed things. The detection system might have read as that, and my recommendation is certainly that we get a fire detection system in that building. It's, a fire down there would be, would hurt.
Tom, what was the cost on that, or did Jared do you?
It was like $20,000.
It wasn't, it wasn't.
No, we're following up to make sure it's either on state contract, or if it's not, we would need three additional quotes, or two additional quotes.
So the committee encouraged that to move ahead and get that in place as soon as possible. The senior high steam boiler, there's a large discussion about that. The dishwasher needs high-temperature water, high-temperature water to clean. There's no way around it. We have a contract with a maintenance company that identified the steam boiler as being on its last legs. And so this is an opportunity of getting it replaced prior to it failing and having the steam tables. Now, my suspicion is that it's an old steam boiler, it was set up for much more stuff. And I would like Jared to talk to the ESCO people about getting that taken care of, either part of the ESCO or part of the food service. But what they would recommend, they're on site, I'm sure they've looked at this machine. But we need that high-temperature water by food service requirements. So, and there's no, and there's no other way to get it. I don't remember any additional items. Anything else come up?
Well, I'm just hoping that we hear back on ESCO soon, because I don't see how we're going to be able to do much of this air conditioning without.
Well, no, yes, yeah, but it's going to take a while for them to put this together.
Okay, that's fine, just so we have it.
But they're the most familiar with all of our buildings. Okay, and they're willing to do this as part of their relationship building with us. So hopefully, within a month or so, we're going to have some information, at least some raw numbers that we can, that we can put in, okay, because right now the numbers are placeable at this point.
Well, not entirely, I mean.
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah. Okay, I have a lot more confidence when the numbers come from the professional engineers. Even more confident than my numbers. So I have a couple motions. The Change Order 29, the Eisenhower Furniture District Fund, I'd like to take all three of those together, any objections? I move that the board approve most of 7.2 Eisenhower Change Order, 29, 7.3 Eisenhower Furniture, that's not to exceed, and 7.4, the District Phone System.
One second.
Thank you.
Discussion. I do have a question, I don't know that this phone system will last 25 years, but I would like to know. It is going to save you a good bit of money, isn't it?
Yes, I mean, the 3,000, that's for basically the rental of the equipment and also the phone service, where now we're probably paying $10,000, $15,000 a month.
So it's a huge savings for us.
I'm a little amused, because my office has went through this, and our phones that we bought in 1995 were deemed to be inoperative, and the switchboard was to be, you know, electric flashing, but, so we went over, we went to the same, the same system. And now our Johnstown office and Indiana office is connected, the secretaries can answer the phones for Johnstown. We can transfer things back and forth, which is significant improvements, so I would expect to see some significant improvements.
Anything else on discussion, Rob?
Except to lay off the lady who pulls the plugs out.
That's what I understood, I can understand wiring when you plug that sucker in.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say nay. Okay, the ayes have it. I'm up for Audit and Finance. We had a meeting tonight. As we already know, we finished the year in the good. We announced those figures at the last meeting, so we're pleased about that, thank you again, Jared. Our audit report has been submitted to the state, correct?
Our audit, annual audit is in process, our AFR.
AFR.
The big financial report has been submitted to the state.
And when do you expect the audit, the audit itself? Usually she comes in in January.
She'll be, yeah, she'll be back in November, probably to do a couple follow-up things, and then the actual report will be finished probably by the end of December, and then she'll come in January or February to present it to the committee.
Okay. We did talk about the Stewart Capital at S&amp;T Bank is being dissolved, so we're in the process of changing some of those investments around, and some of the investments were sent over to PDSDLAF, Pennsylvania State.
Pennsylvania School District Liquid.
Which is good.
We love our assets.
Yeah, which is very good. We also talked about, we're taking over one of the, what do you call it, kitchen?
Food service.
Food service accounts over to First Commonwealth Bank. Do you have anything you want to add about?
No, we're happy to have.
And then we all have this, the budget timeline he gave us, where's that? I would appreciate if everybody would tape it to their mirror, where is it, their bathroom mirror? I don't even have it. It's that long sheet that tells us all the dates that are coming up, it's very important. We did find out tonight that our, this is it, tape it to your mirror, memorize it, because it's important. We did find out that, I lost my.
Act 1 index.
Yeah, exactly, 6.8, it hasn't changed, that's a good thing it hasn't gone up, I think, but. So we'll be voting on the index, which means that unless we vote otherwise, we can only raise taxes to the index. I certainly, 6.8%, I certainly personally, as chair of that committee, am not seeing any reason for that, that we would have to do such a thing, but we have to wait and see, so we'll be voting on that later. So I have a few motions tonight. I gave my committee report. So 8.2, the new savings account, that based on the recommendation of the Audit and Finance Committee, the board approves the opening of a new food service savings account with the Commonwealth Bank, and the closing of the food service savings account at S&amp;T Bank.
Second.
Discussion.
And I think, Julie, we said we're going to go back and ensure that FCB has given us the same rate that S&amp;T.
Or better, or better.
Or better.
Yes, I will go back to them before all paperwork is done.
So we're waiting with bated breath. Be nice to see that. The committee is in full agreement that that would be a good thing, that would be good. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay. Okay, that concludes our regular agenda. Discussion items.
None.
We don't have any public comment on agenda items, none. We have conc-enclosures, student activity reports, conference resumes for Stephanie Brillhart. Notice of executive session, we did have an executive session tonight at 6:30 PM, do you want to fill the media in on?
We talked about a couple of labor-related items, and I think that's it, they were all labor-related items, right?
Yes, and then.
And then an update about the, we had attempted. And then, and then an update about the, we had an attempted fraud that was thwarted.
Warded.
It was a, it was a check, so that's what we're going to say, but we got it straightened, so it had a very good ending. Okay, so it's not, okay, the next board meeting will be on November 18, 2024, at 7:00 PM. This will be the only meeting in November. Next committee meeting, Academic and Extracurricular, November 4 at 5:30.[1751.91]